Trial. 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 Trial.
Let's start. It's 1:09 already. The 108th Regular Session of the 8 Sangguyang Pang lungsod
Trial
is hereby called order. May I request Honorable Balori to lead the invocation to be followed by the National Anthem and Bukit Nonhim.
Trial.
For the Catholic, sign of the cross. And Fathers and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord, thank you for this day that we gather here in our session and we hope and pray na tagaan mo ngaydan sa amuang session karoon
Trial
na tagaan mo ng proper mindset para lang sa amuang katauhan. They say us in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Mga kababayan,
Trial
ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas.
Trial.
Ayang magigil, kela sa si ganan alam ng puso sa iyo'y buhay du pang pinilang, kaya ng magiting
sa manong opri, di ka pasisigil
sanay na tap, tutok sa si boyat, salami ko bawal ay di na kam, tula ka, isa, pagkayang ni na mahal kapisak na, pagkawan kuyan, umay na, keke kapitui na, talo na, kayda, pagkayla, kiting
du manag, olo ng war, hati pa si ka, kuyan na, it sa pinig aming niyayana, pagkay na, aming, apama kay na, ka hilso Trial. Trial.
Isan ng hinun lalakumun
Trial
hindi ta bukidno
Trial
untu na matangka kanasana kuwa
Trial
atunkay madagwa
Trial
untu na balayay
Trial Trial
astuanka pitya
Trial
singan
Trial Trial Trial.
Wherever I may roam
Trial
to see I long to go back soon
Trial
to sweet Bukitnon home where lovely mountains hide with forests all and land bring memories to me the home I long to see
Trial
there my heart yearns to be in far away Bukitnon land under its blue starry skies where love and joy never die
Trial
there my heart yearns to be in far away Bukitnon land under its blue starry skies where love and joy
Trial Trial. Trial.
May I request Honorable Balori, please?
Please your right hand and recite after me. I am a Philippine Consular mandated by Lotuin Act. My search and ordinances that redound to the general welfare of my constituents and the pursuit for happiness, peace, and prosperity. I believe in public about the guiding principle of official act. As I stray the pathways of local legislation, may my umaytity guide my mind and heart. A challenge shall be true to my constituents and the Filipino people.
Trial.
All right, Secretariat, please? When you do the roll call?
Trial. Trial.
Honorable Vice Mayor J. Warren R. Pabiliaran. Honorable Consular Esti Lito R. Marabe.
Trial.
Honorable Consular Niko P. Aldiger. Honorable Consular Rendon P. Sangdalan.
Present.
Honorable Consular Juli Simon Santo. Honorable Consular Erwin A. Damasco. Honorable Consular Cromwell Kirill Dinlayan.
Trial.
Honorable Consular Luell M. Tortola. Honorable Consular Victor M. Baroso. Honorable Consular Christopher B. Soria. Honorable Consular Kastlin Cecil C. Pagaling. Honorable Consular Bonifacio G. Valiente.
Present. Present.
Trial.
Honorable Consular Renato E. Sumbungan. Honorable Consular Julian Dave
Trial
Dave Julian A. Balori. There are ten members present, Your Honors, with eight independent
Tung, tung, bananin ya tung. Kung asa atuani tung. Considering that we have attained the required number, Gorom is hereby declared disorder. Next item?
Your Honors, approval of the Order of Business.
May I request Honorable Monsanto, please?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Order of Business for the 108th Regular Session of the 8 Sangguyang Pang lungsod, as stated, Mr. Chair.
A motion has been made by Honorable Monsanto, Julie seconded by Honorable Tortola for the approval of the Order of Business
Trial
for the 108th Regular Session of this 8 Sangguyang Pang lungsod. Any comments? Amendments?
Trial.
From the online members? Any amendment?
None, thank you, Kayo. Basinsya, nataimin.
Trial.
Honorable Tortola, you are recognized.
Trial.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the first amendment, Mr. Chair, I would like to include on the referrals the letter coming from the licensing licensing
Trial.
Department, that Business Permit and Licensing Department
Trial
of the City of Malibu with regards to the request for the extension of the renewal of business permit and licensing, Mr. Chair. It to be included on, as referral, Mr. Chair.
Trial.
Okay, so that will be in item number 10?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Trial.
A motion has been made by Honorable Tortola to include as part of item number 10, the referral coming from the City Licensing Office with respect to the extension
Trial
of deadline for the renewal of business permit for Motorola operators. Any comments or objections? Hearing none, the motion of Honorable Tortola is
None, Mr. Chair. Then, under the committee report, Mr. Chair.
That's another amendment?
Amendment on the committee report, committee report
Trial
on the committee of waste and maintenance and economic enterprise, Mr. Chair.
So item number 12, number three, business for the day?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Ah, no, item number 11, number one, committee report. Committee report, Mr. Chair.
Trial.
Any comments or objection to the second amendment made by Honorable Tortola?
None, Mr. Chair.
Hearing none, the motion of Honorable Tortola to amend the Order of Business under the committee report
Trial
is hereby approved. Going back to the main motion of Honorable Monsanto.
Mr. Chair, you have another one? Another, Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Under other matters, Mr. Chair, I would like to register
Trial
three reports, Mr. Chair, from the committee of Finance Banking Accounts and Approfication, Mr. Chair. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Noted, Honorable Tortola, Secretariat, please? Before we proceed, we recognize the we recognize Honorable Aldiger and Honorable Soria who are online
Trial
for this session. Yes, Honorable Dinlayan, you are recognized?
Trial.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I want to register one committee report, Mr. Chair, during the other matters on behalf of the Committee on Judiciary and Public Works for the various contract agreement with different contractors
Trial
pertaining to the project of the City Government of Malibu. I sum up, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so that will be for clarification, that will be number four under the other matters. Okay, a motion is made by Honorable Dinlayan to include an item in other matters, which will be number four for the agenda, and Julie seconded by Honorable Tortola. Any objections?
Trial.
Hearing none, the motion of Honorable Dinlayan is approved. Any other amendments? None, going back to the main motion of Honorable Monsanto for the approval of the Order of Business as presented and as amended by Honorable Tortola and Honorable Dinlayan. Any comments or objections?
Trial.
Hearing none, the motion is hereby approved, ordered. Next item?
Your Honors, reading an approval of the minutes of the previous sessions, namely, the 106th Regular Session held on November 9, 2021, and the 107th Regular Session held on November 16, 2021, Your Honors.
Trial.
Honorable Monsanto is recognized?
Mr. Chair, inasmuch as all the members of the council, Mr. Chair has an advance copy of these minutes of the 106th Regular Session as well as on the 107th Regular Session. I move, Mr. Chair, that we dispense with the oral reading of the same
Trial
and instead we should review the minutes silently, Mr. Chair. And instead, we should review the minutes silently, Mr. Chair.
I so move. Motion has been made by Honorable Monsanto and duly seconded by Honorable Tortola to dispense the actual oral reading of the 106th and 107 minutes of the regular session. Any comments or objections?
Trial.
Hearing none, we'll proceed to the reading of the minutes silently, page by page. Let's go over first to the 106th Regular Session Minutes. Page one. Page two.
Trial.
Three. Page four. Page five. Six.
Trial.
Page seven. Eight.
Trial.
Nine. Ten. Eleven.
Trial.
Twelve. Page thirteen. Fourteen and fifteen. Now, let's go to, uh,
Trial.
107 Minutes. Page one.
Trial.
Page two. Three. Four. Page five. Six.
Trial.
Seven. Eight. Nine. And page 10. Any motion, Honorable Monsanto?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there being no corrections, amendments to the said minutes, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the 106th Minutes of the 106th Regular Session held on November 9, 2021, as well as the minutes of the 107th Regular Session held on November 16, 2021, Mr. Chair.
I so move. A motion has been made by Honorable Monsanto for the approval of the 106th and 107 Minutes of the Regular Session of this August body. And since there are no corrections, any second to the motion? And duly seconded. Uh, the motion of Honorable Monsanto is hereby approved, ordered. Next item.
Your Honors, Privilege Hour.
Anyone who would like to avail the privilege hour? From the online members?
None, Mr. Chair.
Trial.
None, Mr. Chair.
Next item.
Your Honors, Question Hour.
We don't have, um, invited guests or visitors, so we'll proceed to the next item.
Your Honors, first reading and referral of proposed measures and other communications. Item number one, a letter dated November 17, 2021 of Mr. Carlito R. Juarez, City Accountant, submitting to the Sangguniang Panlongsood Members the financial statements for the month of October 2021 and its supporting schedules, Your Honors.
Refer to the Committee on Finance, Bank Accounts, and Appropriation.
Item number two, Your Honors, is another letter dated November 18, 2021 of Florl Delis C. Enriquez, Ceso OIC District Engineer of the Department of Public Works and Highways, Bukidon First District Engineering Office, to the Sangguniang Panlongsood Members, the role for the construction of road slope protection structure alongside Re-Highway of DPWA's Bukidon First District Engineering Office, Malay Balay City, Bukidon, Your Honors.
Refer to the Committee on Engineering and Public Works.
Item number three, Your Honors, is another letter dated November 19, 2021 of Mr. Alj C. Alaan, CLGOO, furnishing the Sangguniang Panlongsood Members a copy of DILG issuance relative to the advisory on the invitation of local chief executives and functionaries to participate in the NEO webinar executive session on LGU Good Governance Through Nutrition, Your Honors.
For information to all members of this August body.
Item number four, Your Honors, is another letter dated November 19, 2021 of Mr. Alj C. Alaan, CLGOO, furnishing the Sangguniang Panlongsood Members a copy of DILG issuance relative to the advisory on the celebration of the 2021 National Biotechnology Week, Your Honors.
For information also to all members.
Item number five, Your Honors, is another letter dated November 22, 2021 of the Honorable City Mayor Florentino T. Flores Jr., submitting to the Sangguniang Panlongsood Members for legislative authorization, the City Devolution Transition Plan, Your Honors.
Alright, to the following committees, the Committee on Finance, Bank Accounts, and Appropriation, Committee on Civil Service and Personal Management, to the Committee on Ways and Means and Economic Enterprise, to the Committee on Agriculture and Agrarian Reform, to the Committee on Commerce, Trade, and Industry, to the Committee on Codification Goals and Laws, to the Committee on Education, to the Committee on Environment and Natural Resources, and to the Committee on Health and Social Welfare Services.
Next item, Your Honors, is a letter dated November 22, 2021 of the Honorable City Mayor Florentino T. Flores Jr., requesting the Sangguniang Panlongsood Members for the passage of an ordinance augmenting the request of the following offices, Your Honors, namely, the City Environment and Natural Resources Office, the City General Services Office,
Trial.
The License Division under the City Mayor's Office and the City Health Office, Your Honors.
To the Committee on Finance, Bank Account, and Appropriation.
Last item, Your Honor, uh,
No, second to the last.
Second to the last item, Your Honors, is an endorsement dated November 22, 2021 of the Honorable City Mayor Florentino T. Flores Jr., endorsing to the Sangguniang Panlongsood Members the CDR RMC Resolution Number 6 Series of 2021 entitled "A Resolution Approving the Proposed Financial Plan" utilizing the trust fund for calendar trust fund years 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2020 of the Malay Balay City Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Fund, Your Honors.
To the Committee on Finance, Bank Accounts, and Appropriation.
Last item, Your Honors, as per amendment by Honorable Tortola, is the request from the City Business Permits and Licensing Office relative to the extension of the deadline of business permits in the city, Your Honors.
To the Committee on Ways and Means and Economic Enterprise.
Nothing follows, Your Honor.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Honorable Monsanto.
I move, Mr. Chair, that those referrals of proposed measures and other communications be considered to have passed the first reading, Mr. Chair. A motion has been made by Honorable Monsanto that the, uh, following referrals and communications be referred to the, uh, committee concerned and to consider the same to have passed the first reading. Any comments or objections? Hearing none, the motion of Honorable Monsanto is hereby approved, ordered. Next item.
Your Honors, Committee Reports per Amendment. One committee report from the Committee on Ways and Means and Economic Enterprises per amendment of Honorable Tortola.
Honorable Tortola, please.
Trial.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, in behalf of the Committee Ways and Means and Economic Enterprise, uh, we would like to
Trial.
render, uh, our committee report. We, this is with regards to the letter from the Licensing Officer for Mr. Arturo Caliao in behalf of the Business One-Stop Shop Technical Working Group, requesting the extension of the renewal of the business permit and licensing and Motorola permit submitted on November 3 and was endorsed to the Committee of Ways and Means Economic Enterprise to Presiding Officer, Honorable, uh, J. Warren Pabiliaran. The meeting of the Committee of Ways and Means and Economic Enterprise was made, uh, last, uh, Monday,
Trial.
November 22. Uh, and that, uh, the official in charge, uh, the, the
Trial.
Our Business Permit Licensing Office headed by Mr. Aliao Arturo also discussed with regards to this extent that the extension is necessary for the deadline for the renewal of the business permit of the licenses and also the Motorola permits due to the implementation of covenant in minimum, minimum public health standard. And with that, Mr. Chair, uh,
Trial.
I move for the approval of my committee report.
A motion has been made by Honorable Tortola for adoption of his committee report. Any comments or objections? Hearing none, you can proceed to discussion.
Discussion, Mr. Chair.
Trial.
Just like last year, we also approved the extension as requested. So, on 2021, the extension was implemented. But because this is under the Revenue Code of the City of Malay Balay under Section 39, that the deadline of the renewal of business permit will be every January 20.
Trial.
So, this January 20 has some, uh, extension as requested. Uh, we have also, I hope, uh, you have provided also the following dates
Trial.
Various, uh, extension of deadlines. So, this is necessary, Mr. Chair, because of the protocol, health protocol, that will be observed
Trial.
Especially the Motorola drivers. So, the committee find that, uh, the request is necessary. So, with that, we endorse to this, uh,
Trial.
The approval of the extension.
Okay. Before we proceed to the, uh, questions by the, of the, of the members of this August body, we recognize the arrival of our Vice Mayor Warren Pabiliaran, and I declare recess for one minute.
Trial. Trial. Trial.
Okay, session is on.
Trial. 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 Trial.
Okay, continue, City Councilor Tortola.
Trial. Trial.
Again, uh,
Trial.
The same request was also provided last year. So, we are still on the pandemic, so another request for this year, 2020, uh, for the coming year, 2022 is requested by the, uh, Business Permit and Licensing Office.
Trial. Trial.
Discussion.
Trial.
Yes. Okay, City Councilor Monsanto, you are recognized.
The supposed to be, uh, deadline is January, January 2022. But we have to extend that per request up to when?
There are various schedules.
Various schedules, okay, as stated in the report.
Trial.
Inasmuch as this is a request which we have, uh, we're going to take up now. We will not be imposing any penalty.
Yes, Mr. Chair. That's, uh,
Trial.
Some of the, for intention of the extension, Mr. Chair.
Just to help them.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Trial.
Any other discussion? Any amendments? Any objection? The chair stands, so the motion of City Councilor Tortola is approved. Any recommendation?
Uh, I move to suspend the three reading rule, Mr. Chair, because, uh, with this request, they can start out now, uh, advertising they, or notifying with regards to the extension for the 26 barangays of Malay Balay City, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any more discussion? Any objection that we suspend our three reading rules? The chair stands, so the motion of City Councilor Tortola is approved. You mean now proceed?
With that, Mr. Chair, uh, the Committee on Ways and Means and Economic Enterprise, uh, would like to pass
Trial.
An urgent resolution extending the deadline of the renewal of business permit and licenses and Motorola permits. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Any second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Any amendments? Any objection? The chair stands, so the motion of City Councilor Tortola is approved. Since this is on a third reading, those in favor raise your right hand, or say aye?
Aye.
Unanimously approved, ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next.
Your Honors, Calendar of Business, Business for the Day. For third reading is the proposed ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Approving the Land Use Reclassification of Certain Parcels of Land Located at Purokto, Barangay Lagitas, Malay Balay City, From Light Industrial Use to Special Use Memorial Park."
Trial.
Okay, this is on a third reading. Those in favor raise your right hand, or say aye?
Aye.
Unanimously approved.
Next item, Your Honors, is for second reading, the proposed ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Institutionalizing and Strengthening the Barangay Public Safety Offices of the City of Malay Balay and Appropriating Funds Necessary Therefore and for Other Purposes," Your Honors.
City Councilor Sanggala, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move for another deferal, Mr. Chair, on that.
Trial.
I so move. Defer, Mr. Chair, for next session.
In a second? Any more discussion? Any objection? The chair stands, so the motion of City Councilor Sanggala is approved. Let's continue, Madam Secretariat.
Your Honors, per amendment during the approval of the Order of Business, Honorable Tortola, uh, suggest amended the Order of Business by including three other matters under other matters, Your Honors.
City Councilor Tortola, you are recognized. Three. Okay.
Mr. Chair, this is with regards to items who have been done for first reading this session and this is with regards to the, uh, which, uh, be considered as committee report of Committee on Finance, Banking Accounts, and Appropriation.
Trial.
With regards to later request dated November 22, 2021 of the City Mayor Florentino T. Flores to the Presiding Officer, Honorable J. Warren Pabiliaran Vice Mayor. Through this committee request for the passage of an ordinance augmenting the following request,
Trial.
The request, uh, coming from the City Environment and Natural Resources with regards to augmentation under, uh, trainings and seminars in the amount of 135 to be augmented to
Trial.
Traveling expenses. And, uh, request from City General Services Office, uh, training seminars in the amount of 135 to traveling expenses of the same amount. And also, uh, request from License Division
Trial.
Under City Mayor's Office from training seminars in the amount of 89,400 augmented to traveling expenses. And from the City Health, from training and seminars, 319,900 to traveling expenses. It has found that necessary this to cover the expenses to be incurred
Trial.
In the respective, uh, schedule year in assessment and target seating, strategic planning, and work and team building. So, the request was also, uh, made
Trial.
To be included as an urgent matter, Mr. Chair. With that, uh, I move for the adoption of my report, Mr. Chair.
In a second? Any more discussion? Discussion from the members? Online members, none? Okay, amendments?
Trial.
Objection? The chair stands, so the motion of City Councilor Tortola is approved.
With that, Mr. Chair, uh, I move to, uh, pass an urgent ordinance of augmentation
Trial.
For the approval of the, uh, of the request as mentioned, Mr. Chair.
In a second?
Second.
Discussion? Amendments, objection? The chair stands, so the motion of City Councilor Tortola is approved. This is on a third reading, those in favor raise your right hand, or say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved.
Another, uh, report, Mr. Chair, uh, coming from the Committee Another report, Mr. Chair, coming from the Committee on Finance, Banking Accounts, and Appropriation. This is with regards to the first endorsement later dated November 22 from the City Mayor, Provinciality Pluris, to the Presiding Officer, Honorable J. Warren Pabiliaran. With regards to the CDRRMC Resolution Number 6, Series of 2021, a resolution approving the proposed financial plan utilizing the trust fund for current year 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2020 of the Malay Balay City Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Fund, involving the amount of
Trial.
I think 27,509,752.49, Mr. Chair. With that, Mr. Chair, oh, correction, Mr. Chair, the budgeted appropriation should be 40. I hope you also have the copy, Mr. Chair. It's involved with 40,272,899. Because the subtotal of MOA is 27,109,752.49. But there is also a capital outlay. So the total including the capital outlay is 40,272,008.99. With that, Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of my committee report.
In a second? Any more discussion? Any amendments? Any objection? The chair stands, so the most of City Councilor Tortola is approved.
With that, Mr. Chair, I move to pass an urgent resolution approving the proposed financial plan utilizing the trust fund for the calendar years 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2020 of the Malay Balay City Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Office. I so move, Mr. Chair.
In a second? Any more amendments? Any more discussion? Any amendments, objection? The chair stands, so the most of City Councilor Tortola is approved. Since this is on a third reading, those in favor, raise your hand, or say aye.
Trial.
Aye.
Unanimously approved. Next.
The last item, Mr. Chair, is because on item number five, with regards to the referral for the decision, it involves with the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 committees, Mr. Chair. And as a member of the Devolution Transition Committee, which provide the plans of the city Devolution Transition Plan.
Trial.
We...
Provela, did you distribute a copy of your committee report? Can I?
Trial.
I'm just discussing this, Mr. Chair, because I want this to be covered on the next session, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Just for the information of everybody, the Committee on Finance will be having its committee meeting this coming Monday. And that because it involves voluminous of the report, Mr. Chair, I hope this is also all downloaded in the system, Mr. Chair. Okay. Because actually, the deadline of this devolution should be November 12.
Trial.
The committee decided to forward the report without the approval first, so that the DILG can review our report on the Region 10. Then after the review, kung wala na ganun significant mga changes or amendment, we will now take the report on the committee level. So that's the decision of the Chairman of the Committee on the Devolution and Transition. So morag nahuman naman dito, then we will just waiting for the messages, the finalization of this report.
Trial.
So on Monday, I would like to request everybody to please review the Devolution Transition Report. And on Monday, we will want to receive any comments during the meeting of the Finance Committee. I hope also that on Monday, if you will agree, this will be a committee on the whole of the whole meeting on Monday to discuss this devolution plan, Mr. Chair.
What time on Monday?
Maybe on the holiday, Mr. Chair, because we will give time to them to present this report. Then on the afternoon, I will be having my committee meeting with regards to the preliminary discussion on our annual budget, Mr. Chair. So just for the information, Mr. Chair, also if the concerned committee would agree, Mr. Chair.
Trial.
Okay. So what's the pleasure of the good gentleman, status report, ano ni?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So by Monday, we will send another communication, Mr. Chair, for the scheduled meeting, Mr. Chair.
Trial.
November 29. So fixed, November 29, whole day.
Whole day.
Okay, just send the necessary letter or notices to the members of the Sanggunan.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all.
Thank you, thank you. Next is Committee on Engineering and Public Works, City Councilor Dinayan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good afternoon.
Trial.
On behalf of the Committee on Engineering and Public Works, Mr. Chair, there is a letter coming from the local chief executive, a second endorsement endorsing to the Sanggunan Panlongsood through the Presiding Officer, the Vice Mayor J. Warren Pabiliaran. They hear in endorsement from Attorney Julius Baruso, our city legal officer, with regards to various contract agreement with different contractors pertaining to the project of the city government of Malay Balay. Mr. Chair, I suggest that this committee report will be included for the next 109 regular session, specifically the rendering of committee reports. Because, Mr. Chair, this is a voluminous copy of these contracts in order to give time and review the same to be fair to the members of this august body, Mr. Chair.
Trial.
The first six contracts, Mr. Chair, I think my staff has already furnished a copy of with our secretary, Attorney Phoebe.
Trial.
Therefore, Mr. Chair, I so move that this report will be included for the next session.
In a second? Any more discussion?
Short discussion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, continue.
I would like also to request, remind ma'am Phoebe, nga katunag yung 18 contracts, first 18 contracts. Around ano sila ikopya. First six atong i-tackle for next session, but if reneis na daan ang 18 contracts. Because there's a total of 44 projects or contracts. This is from the National Budget DILG for the Local Government Support Fund. In short, ka tong identified the areas.
Trial.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any more discussion? Any amendments? Any objection? The chair stands, so the most of City Councilor Dinayan is approved. Sordid, Madam Secretary, take note. Okay, any other matters? Any other matters? City Councilor Dinayan? You are recognized.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. I would like to remind again our Madam Secretary that we will continue to invite the traffic management in charge in the person of Sir Buynere. Yes, Mr. Chair, for the next session.
Trial. Trial.
So, Madam Secretary, please take note to the request of the Chairman on the Committee on Transportation with respect to the invitation to our traffic management center.
Yes, sir.
Trial.
How about the request of City Councilor Tortola also to? The PNP will have also its own investigation. So, City Councilor Tortola, you are recognized?
Trial.
Doha mentongi request, pin mentong PNP?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
We should also invite with regard related to the request of Honorable Dinayan. We would also request that the same will be done to the PNP, Mr. Chair, that they will also render their support with regards to the same subject matter, Mr. Chair.
It will be tackled the same day.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Same topic, same incident. In a second? Any more discussion? Any amendments, objection? The chair stands, so the most of City Councilor Tortola is approved. Take note, Madam Secretary. Next, holiday man next, so it will be December 7. Okay. Any other matters? Members on the floor? Members on the online? None? Since there are no other matters to tackle, the Chair declares an adjournment at exactly 1:57 in the afternoon. Sordid, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Trial. 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 Trial.